Good evening. Hello? Good evening. My name is Dick Downey and I shall be your moderator for this evening. The hour of seven o'clock has arrived. A quorum is present. I therefore call this fiscal 2020 special town meeting to order. Those of you who wish to celebrate our democracy and our freedoms, please stand and join me in the pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start the proceedings this evening, I would like to spend a few minutes to go over some of the ground rules for tonight's meeting. Per Section 2.2 of the Charter, I am required to appoint a deputy moderator who shall complete the town meeting should I be unable to continue. Therefore, I would like to appoint Jim Coleman as deputy moderator. This appointment needs to be ratified by town meeting, so all those in favor of Jim Coleman, as deputy moderator, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion carries. Per the Commonwealth of Massachusetts law, there is no smoking on school property, that is neither the building nor the parking or the grounds. Please take a moment right now to shut off all your cell phones, which I'll do myself, and put it on to vibrate so that we don't cause any disruptions and is a courtesy to your fellow residents. Before we start this meeting tonight and going over the detailed rules, the selectman would like to say a few words. Mr. De Silva?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, as everybody in Maynard understands, to do these type of things, we need volunteers. We need volunteers in committees, we need volunteers in boards, we need volunteers to fill in the gaps where the budget doesn't allow us to hire full-time employees. Over the past 25 or 30 years, we've been lucky enough in Maynard to have a volunteer who's raised his hand on every occasion he's been asked and stood up and volunteered for the community, school building committee committees. He's been a member of finance committees in the past, and during my time on the finance committee, his leadership and guidance were invaluable whether he knows it or not. And most recently, this gentleman has spearheaded the drive to a new fire station, found us a new location, and worked tirelessly to find us funding for a new fire station. Unfortunately, he's moving out of Maynard soon, but before he goes, I think the town in Maynard owes him a debt of gratitude and thanks, and the board of selectmen does as well. And I know that Chief Starwars would like to express his thanks as well for the contributions of Ron Calabria. So if you guys could all honor Ron. Ron, we have a gift for you. So now you have to come up and get the gift, or I'll deliver it. Your choice.
We have some non-residents guests here with us this evening. If there are no valid objections, they will be allowed to remain. However, all the guests must be over here in the first five or six rows over on the left. So if you're a guest and you're not a voter, I would ask you to please go over to that side. In no case will they be allowed to vote, however. Guests may be allowed to speak, but only if requested by a town official and only to provide information, not opinions. The Commonwealth requires that the town clerk provide the Attorney General's office with detailed notes on every article and every person who speaks at this meeting. Therefore, I ask that you clearly state your name and street address each time that you speak. There are microphones in the front of each aisle here, and please line up behind those microphones, and I will recognize you in order. Please address all questions and comments to me, the moderator, and then I will send them to the appropriate person. My job here is to balance the best flow of new information for voters to evaluate while keeping the meeting as efficient as possible. Therefore, it is important that you make your point concisely and stay on topic. If I feel that no new information is being presented, I shall then call for the vote. If you have more than one question or statement to make, please go to the rear of the line for your next question or statement in order that as many people as possible get an opportunity to speak. Depending on the answer, I may allow one follow-up question, but that will be at my discretion. Since all this is being recorded, I may ask you to start over if we cannot hear or understand you. Our Constitution gives us the right to make our opinions known and ask questions. In fact, I'm encouraging everyone here to do so. However, this does not give anybody the right to be disrespectful to other audience members or to town officials. Should I feel that is happening, I shall ask that that person stop speaking and to take their seat. Each person shall have some ballots that you were given when you registered. Tonight's starting number is 10. Please check the ballots right now and see that yours starts with 10. If it does not, please go out front and get a new set of ballots. To facilitate the counting, when we do use the ballots, please do not fold them. Just turn them upside down and put them into the collector's basket. That will speed up the whole process of counting and make the hour that should go home sooner. I shall call for an article, and the individual that is sponsoring that organization will move the article. All articles moved must be given to me in writing, which has already been done in advance for the standard warrant. I shall only read the articles if it is moved differently from that printed in the warrant. If an amendment is made to an article, it must be given to me in writing. If you open your warrant, you will find referenced information on pages two, three, and four that talks about how the town meeting is run and what your options are in doing things. I would like to welcome our new town clerk, Michelle Jenkins. She's coming here this evening for the first day. She officially starts next Monday. This will be her baptism of fire, so to speak. I would also like to acknowledge and thank Anita Dolan and Joanne Sheehan, who have organized all of these support services for this meeting as volunteers during our town clerk interview process. So let us begin. Are there any committee or departmental reports?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to present an interim report of the Master Planning and Steering Committee.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Brendan Chatwin. I'm chair of the Master Planning and Steering Committee. The Master Planning and Steering Committee was formed in December of 2011 by the Board of Selectmen, 2017, excuse me, by the Board of Selectmen in charge with updating the 26-year-old master plan. The master plan captures the community's vision for itself while looking to answer the question of where we want to be in five, 10, or 15 years. Specific goals and recommendations provide explicit guidance to policymakers, developers, and residents. The community has been committed to developing the master plan through a significant investment that occurred here at town meeting. As part of this process and with the support of our consultant, VHB, the committee has conducted several public engagements. We have interviewed various stakeholders in taking draft documents back to various committees and boards for their input. We're reaching the end of our work, with the next step being the prioritization of recommendations including timelines and estimated costs. To that end, we invite the community to join us at our final public input session on October 30th, this Wednesday, in the lower level of Town Hall. At that meeting, attendees will have the opportunity to review draft recommendations and identify those that they feel are of most importance. The committee will take input from that meeting and with the support of our consultant, create the final master plan. We will then engage the planning board and Board of Selectmen seeking their formal endorsement. Additional information sessions will be held in the spring to share the final document with the community culminating in a final committee report at the Spring 2020 Annual Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I shall entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrant in its entirety.
Bill Coleman, Howard Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of the warrant in its entirety be waived but be made part of the record of this meeting and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter instead of reading each article completely.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Motion carries. Will the sponsor of the first article please present?
Article one, I make a motion to move to approve Article one as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
The finance, yeah, okay.
Sorry, Ken.
Would you like to make a presentation?
Mr. Moderator, before the presentation begins, could we ask the WAVM representative to put the...
Who is speaking?
No, can we ask the WAVM representative to update the screen so that it's on the... Thank you.
Can we do it? Flip the slide, please. There you go.
No, next one.
Flip again. One more?
Next one.
Next.
Next one. Next one. There you go. Thank you.
Someone told me that was my job. I need a volunteer to help me.
I think you have a clicker there, too.
So I have the remote here. So this is Article number one. Basically, we're looking to amend the balance of the town's current fiscal year 2020 operating budget by subtracting the following amounts from the following budget line items. General Government: $28,500. Public Safety: $30,000. Education: $86,000. Public Works: $13,500. And Employee Benefits: $14,000 for a total reduction of the budget of $172,000.
Do you have anything that you folks want to add? Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Because this involves more than $50,000, it requires a secret ballot, and so we will now proceed to vote with ballot number 10. Yes or no? We would appreciate everybody that is standing to find a seat and sit down to make it easier Okay, while the counters are tallying the results, I'll ask for a motion on Article two. We're going to make motions for Articles two and three at the same time so that they can be discussed together. They are related, and so we will vote on them separately, but I'll allow discussion for them to be together. So, Jack, would you be kind enough to make a motion on Articles two and three? Amen, would you make the motion for Articles two and three, please?
Absolutely. Good evening. So I'm going to move to approve Article two as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Would you be kind enough to move Article three?
Do you don't want to do the presentation first?
I want to discuss them together.
Got you. So Article three, to move to approve as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, presentation, please.
Second?
So anything that's printed in the warrant is considered seconded?
Are we ready, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, we are.
Good evening. My name is Jack McKeen. I am chair of the Economic Development Committee, and I live on Country Lane. Let's see if we can make this work.
We did. Just shut it off.
Okay, we shut it off. As we've set it up, we're going to discuss two articles, Article two and Article three, together, and if I understand the moderator's desire, we will then vote on them separately. My presentation will cover both Articles two and three. First one is the minimum maintenance bylaw. Second one is contingent upon the first one and is a new bylaw relative to the process for assessing and managing municipal liens. Oh, did it again. As you look at this slide, I'd like you to put the year 2012 beside the first bullet, and I'm going to start with a story. About seven or eight years ago, the 2012 figure that I mentioned, I was downtown talking to a downtown business owner, happened to be not a resident, and I was trying to engage with him because I had used his services before, was very satisfied. But it was very clear, as I talked to him, that he was somewhere on the spectrum of irritated, frustrated, angry. I talked to him long enough, and because I had dealt with him before, I finally understood what he was angry about. He was angry because Town Hall had made a decision which he perceived as negatively impacting his business, both directly and symbolically. And it's the symbology which is important to us here tonight for our discussion. And I'm going to repeat for you, almost verbatim, because I have remembered it, what he said. Remember, years ago, angry, frustrated, he said the following: "Maynard is a dump. The town doesn't care what it looks like or how it takes care of itself." And then he adjusted, "I have this business here that we're standing in this morning, and I own several other buildings here in town, and you know what? I will never invest another dime in Maynard." That little story really encapsulates almost everything we're trying to accomplish with the minimum maintenance bylaw. So think about that from seven or eight years ago. Now move to the second bullet and kind of mentally put a 2016 beside it. In 2016, we have an Economic Development Committee, and we had a meeting in which we invited the local business owners to come in, and a number of them came and participated. There were about four pages of notes from that, and in those notes, one of the topics, what can we do to make downtown in particular more attractive? Third bullet, mentally put a 2019 beside it, because earlier this year, the Master Plan Steering Committee, which you just heard the report, was doing its public online survey. I would like to add my thanks to the folks because there were over 360 responses to that online survey. And in those survey responses was again, what can we do to help the downtown and the town in general look more attractive, be more worthy of something that people would like to invest in? Now, I will try to change slides if I can do it without turning things off. The reality of what we're trying to do with this minimum bylaw is our current tools are truly very limited. The single section of our Chapter 21 bylaw, the nuisance bylaw, has about 25 or 26 sections. One and only one of those deals with nuisance kinds of things having to do with the appearance of buildings and so forth, and is really also set up so that really only the Building Commissioner and the Board of Health are the folks who really focus on it and emphasize the kinds of things we're trying to do. The definitions are really not well spelled out, the compliance requirements not stated, and the use of limited town resources is not optimized because everything typically goes through the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner, and they focus, human nature, on the things that are part of what their departments are responsible for. What we're trying to do with this bylaw, which is in your warrant tonight, and this is a very important slide, we're really trying to set up a process where we work with properties which some of you folks bring to Town Hall. We're dependent on this, on citizens bringing these things to the attention of town officials. So what we're trying to do is put in a process, we catch the property deterioration early, so it's easy to work, it's limited cost to the owners of the property. And I want to say something, it's not in the slides, that as a lot of people work very hard to get this particular bylaw drafted. I'll share a couple of the things. It is not intended to be a revenue generator. It is not intended to be punitive. It is not intended to target individual properties. And those are some of the questions and feedback we got as we were going through this. So those are the... It is not those things. It is really an attempt to work with property owners on a collaborative basis to reduce the negative impact to others. That process has already started, and frankly, that process comes from our conversations with other towns who have successfully done these kinds of things. Some of the examples, artwork in the windows, and this particular example that you see here, I think folks in town will recognize, it's the Murphy and Snyder Building. It was worked under the old bylaw. It took a very, very long time. The owner has replaced the front windows, and at various times, there had been art in the windows. The mural on the side was paid for by public funds as part of a mural program, so that we now have a building which is attractive, even though we still work with that owner to try and find a way, can we get that building occupied? One of the things, this is a little bit of a divergence, but one of the things that became a concern, well, if we're trying to be concerned about the exterior of a building, we have businesses in town which need to put their wares out and make them visible. So there is a specific provision in the bylaw that says external display of products is perfectly acceptable, and both of the businesses that you see here do that. Situations to avoid, I think that most of you will recognize the one on the left. That building has now been demolished and is awaiting plans for what will go there. The building on the right is in the process of being worked through the town, perhaps to be turned into a park area. But I wanted to put these kind of slides up so that we don't, with this bylaw, we have a chance of not letting properties get to this kind of condition. So to summarize, what we're really trying to do is put in place an equitable, more effective tool to ensure, and remember, this is commercial and industrial properties, that are maintained to minimum standards, that they meet defined minimum property maintenance standards, that there's a consistent process. And let me speak to the process for a moment because that's another area where we got a lot of questions. The Office of Municipal Services has nearly finished drafting a process that really addresses this is how it will be administered, and I will emphasize to you, because I have seen a draft of that document, it really is intended that there will be an engagement between the town and any properties which are brought to their attention, that has multiple periods allowing for conversation before any kind of fines or any other action of that type is taken. So I want to emphasize that because there's real emphasis on communication with the owners of the affected properties so that we work in a proactive, collaborative way to make the entire area of our commercial and industrial properties more attractive for investment. That's a summary of that one, and since we're also covering Article three, Article three is a completely separate bylaw which sets up a process for a municipal lien. In Article two, there is the opportunity, if things don't work very well, to assess fines. But the town at the moment has no process to manage fines if they become liens. So this is a very straightforward bylaw which says this is the process by which a lien may be assessed. It is simply plugging a hole because we have not had a process in the past. It is simply plugging a hole, because we have not had a process in the past. That's the purpose of that one. I want to emphasize something else here as well. This really has been a collaborative process with lots of feedback, lots of reaching out to people, and by the way, we got a lot of really good feedback. There was some people who were very active, provided a lot of feedback, particularly around the process and how the thing should work, but it was the community residents, it was the business owners, and certainly town officials. And it has been endorsed by multiple organizations. You heard the Finance Committee, they voted unanimously, the Economic Development Committee supports it, the Maynard Cultural Council supports it, the Maynard Business Alliance, its voting members endorsed it by about a three-to-one margin. So there has been a fair amount of support, and we ask that you approve these two articles tonight. Would that open for questions?
Thank you. Questions? I recognize the microphone to my left.
Stephen Wagner, Charles Street. I think this is all a very good idea. One technicality, I think that when these two articles were moved, each of them was moved with the exception of to do or act thereon. In the printed ballot, I see that only at the end of Article Three. I assume it's still all right.
Yes. Good assumption. Recognize the microphone to my right.
Cornelia Keenan, Great Road. In Article Three, Section Five, could you explain that to me? Could somebody explain it to me? I find it very confusing, the people who are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Collection of the lien.
Okay. Jack, would you? This one I might need a little help on.
Would Town Council be so kind as to help us out here?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Selecting stable.
Can we give it a whirl again? Hello?
Connie, could you expand a little bit on what it is that's confusing?
Well, in the beginning, in section, or Part A, you have the tax collector shall be in charge of collecting the lien. Okay. The treasurer, who is the person responsible for collecting the charge, fine, or penalty. Now, you have two people collecting it. Is not the lien the charge, fine, or penalty? Or is the lien when the charge, fine, or penalty are not paid?
So it becomes a lien when the penalty is not paid?
Okay.
So the tax collector is in charge of collecting the fine which becomes the lien, and then is in charge of also collecting the lien once it becomes a lien?
Okay.
The treasurer essentially commits it to the assessor so that it can go on the tax bill. Those are the next two.
Okay, but then, we talk about the town clerk. Liens each person from a list received from the town clerk. Nobody said anything about giving a list to the town clerk.
So, under the law, so this is directly from the statute. Under the law, the list has to be reported, it's submitted to the assessor to put on the property tax bills.
Okay.
And the list also has to go to the town clerk.
Okay. I didn't see that it said that, but wait a minute. Read the first part of Section Three, C. The assessor shall prepare a statement of municipal charges lien for each person from the list received from the town clerk.
Or person responsible for collecting the charge, fine, or penalty.
Okay. So that would put it back to the tax collector.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Thank you. Lorne Bell. I am not a--
What street?
Brook Street. I'm not a business owner, but like many people in here, I'm friends with many of the business owners in town. I think that these two articles are a significant step in the right direction toward improving the overall aesthetic and attractiveness of our town town, so that we get more fantastic businesses and more interesting businesses coming in like those that we already have. I guess my one concern, I hope that these pass, but I hope that there is some foresight going on here in conversations I've had with the business owners here in town, there are concerns that should any penalties be assessed on business owners, rather on property owners, that those penalties will be passed on to the business owner tenants, and I don't think that that concern is a reason not to pass Article Two and Article Three tonight, but I hope that there are plenty of folks up on the stage right now who have already taken that into consideration and are working on steps to make sure that that doesn't happen, and that the very folks that, businesses that this, these two articles and the bylaws, new bylaws are intended to help, aren't in effect hurt.
Okay. I recognize the central microphone.
Julie Gagin, Parker Street. I'm a business owner in town and president of the Maynard Business Alliance, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Business Alliance. As you may know, the Maynard Business Alliance is a nonprofit organization that's a collective of business owners and property owners within the town. As stated in Jack's presentation, we had, we have 55 members, half of our membership reported for voting on support for this bylaw. We've been working with the Economic Development Committee, we've spoke and presented to the Finance Committee, and worked with organizations within the town to help provide feedback and support for the bylaw, including the statement that was previously made. Out of the 21 votes that we received, so roughly half our membership, 14 said yes. We have five members that said no, and two that abstained. Out of the five noes, only one of them was a property owner, meaning that there were six other votes by property owners in support of this bylaw. Thanks.
Recognize the microphone to my right.
Steve Pomfert, Tudana Road, Maynard Board of Assessors. I think this is falling to the process that we use for real estate liens and that, so, but the problem I have is that it doesn't clearly state who, what process a person has if they don't believe that they, or they believe they've been fined or incorrectly, and so it's not, the Board of Assessors normally takes care of deciding whether or not a person has been taxed collectively, taxed correctly or not. So you need to really identify who it is that's going to make an initial decision if a person, and what process they would use if they believe that they have been fined or whatever incorrectly. Then the other thing was, on the nonprofits, we'd have to create another tax bill, since we normally don't send a tax bill to nonprofit organizations. So this is additional work that we would have to do for the Board of Assessors, and I don't know what the size of these liens and stuff are going to be for the different departments, but it costs money to file a lien. The lawyers can probably tell you that it's legal fees, and you have to file with the registry, and that costs money that the town would have to pay upfront in order to initial the lien, and then they would have to try to get that money back when they send out the tax bill with it on.
Comment, two comments actually. The, hello, hear me? Two comments. The real intent here is to avoid getting to the lien stage, so there's an intent kind of thing. The fines in the bylaw start at $100, and really what we're trying to do with the fine things, they can build up, is cover the cost, so really what we're trying to do is break even. To the other point of your question, I will read from some of the draft things that's in the process piece, because we didn't feel we could put the process piece into the bylaw. The new process includes multiple chances for OMS, that's Office of Municipal Services, staff to reach out to the property owner and discuss the issue. After the complaint is received, the issue is identified, staff would reach out to the property owner and monitor the situation for 30 days. If there is no response, there will be an additional 30-day grace period prior to taking action. So there really is a fairly long period where there's, the goal is engagement with the property owner to see if things can be worked out. So I think that addresses both some of the time and the opportunity, and specifically within the bylaw, there is the opportunity to ask for waiver, and waivers of liens, waivers of fines are on the table pretty much all the time that you're going through this. So I think we've really tried to address that specific issue within both the bylaw and the process.
Okay. Thank you. So no more questions, we'll proceed to vote. I'll give you the results of the previous first. Yes, 225, noes 47, blank zero. Motion carries. Oh, you would like to speak? Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. My name's Jamie, and we own a business--
Move into the microphone.
I'm sorry. My name's Jamie, we own a, we live on Omar Avenue, and we own a business on, um, bless, um, sorry. Thank you. My concern for this, and my question is--
Into the microphone.
I'm sorry, the compliant agent appears to be several individuals. We are in a town right now that is not a dump. As a matter of fact, it's a beautiful town, and I'm concerned that there are many individuals here that can make a decision on the, what my, what our business looks like from the I don't think it's fair to write something like this and have this many individuals being allowed to inspect our business and decide what is in compliance and what is not, without a clear definition, especially in this town. No offense, but with social media, there's been a lot of discord amongst a lot of the issues that have been going on here. So perhaps one person in this group of individuals may not be on the best terms with one of the business owners and could retaliate. This has got to be much more clearer on what specifically is considered in compliance or not in compliance, and it shouldn't be, you know, 12 different people, it should be the building inspector, who is the person that's really, you know, in charge of all of this, it should be doing this from day one. I have concerns about that. It's not that we're against this, but it just doesn't seem right that this many individuals will be going around town, looking at all these businesses and making a judgment call. You have to understand that small businesses are struggling and trying their very best in this town to make it a great town and to stay in business, and there's a lot of factors that determine the health and wealth of a business, and to judge them just based off of the exterior of the building and that many individuals deciding, doesn't seem right or fair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Jack?
Let me respond to that. Let me start by reminding folks that when I started out with my story at the beginning, that was seven years ago. I personally would agree, we have a wonderful town now, and we've made a lot of progress. There are opportunities to continue that progress. To the second part of your point, the bylaw spells out who the people are who are involved in this process, and yes, it is the Building Commissioner, the Board of Health, the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Town Planner, and the Conservation Agent. So it's not some individual that is deciding, gee, I don't like what's going on in Point A or Point B. Basically, you bring these things to Town Hall, and then it is a town-managed process through the Office of Municipal Services. So my comment to you is that this will be professionally managed, and will be managed in the best interest of the town, and what that means is consideration for residents, consideration for business owners, consideration for all of us who live in this town and have, certainly I have for a long time.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
So this is Mike Greendale, Seven Elmwood. Mike Greendale, Seven Elmwood. This is very close. This is sort of a follow-on question. Though I am much more in favor of the general thrust of these motions, there is, I don't know, some lack of specificity, especially in subsection three of Section Three, Article Two. I fail to see the causal link between maintaining good repair and repelling vandalism in Section Eight. There seems to be debris, refuse, rubbish, and/or garbage, physical hazards. I believe pavement is a physical hazard. Just, I appreciate the thrust of this, but I would wonder about some more legally airtight language, just considering we might potentially bring liens. You said it is a town-managed process, and I appreciate that, just--
Yeah, it is a process, and the language we use and the standards and definitions are literally taken from both what other towns have done and what state law shapes for us, as well as the experience of the Building Commissioner and others who have been doing this for quite a long period of time.
Okay.
So it is, I think, an acceptable place to begin this journey.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So all of those in favor, please take your ballots and raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries. Oh, that was Article Two, I'm sorry. Article Three will now vote. Same process, all those in favor, raise your hands with your ballots. Okay? All those opposed? Okay, Article pass. We will do Article Four, please.
So I move to approve Article Four as, I move to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon." I move to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
I have a Finance Committee recommendation. Finance Committee recommends-- And I have a Planning Board recommendation.
Thank you. The Planning Board recommends, "Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Tzolo, Chair of the Planning Board, resident of Randall Road. Essentially, this bylaw change proposes to add a new use, nonprofit, or excuse me, for-profit educational. Currently, we have a nonprofit educational use allowed in our industrial and healthcare industrial zones. This article would allow by special permit a for-profit educational institution in both the industrial and healthcare industrial, also known as Mill and Main, zones. As you can see on the screen, we believe this will provide flexibility with a new, creating a new clean use distinct from the nonprofit educational use, provide clear guidance."
creating a new clean use distinct from the nonprofit educational use, provide clear guidance as to where those are allowed in town with planning board permission, create new opportunities to expand the tax base and cultivate, you know, educational opportunities in general as much as we can within the town. That's all.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Cornelia Keenan, Great Road. Would you define educational institution for profit and give several examples?
Well, we actually, we grappled with this. We elected not to adopt a specific definition in this process and simply take for-profit, excuse me, just to make sure I get the, yes, for-profit educational institutions as a definition in and of itself.
Could you give me some examples?
Hypotheticals, I guess, a, I mean, a school, yes, the Russian School of Mathematics, you know, after-school educational programs, things of that nature.
Thank you.
One more question.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Steve Parfitt again. It would be up to the owner of the property to inform the assessors of any nonprofit organizations that reside, like if it's in an industrial building and it's a nonprofit organization.
This is for profit, Steve.
They would have to inform the board of assessors of the use of that portion of their property in order to get any money off of it. Otherwise, we'll just assess them as a part of their profit building.
Thank you.
No further discussion. We'll vote on article number four using ballot number eleven. This is a secret ballot requirement because it's a zoning audit. if you would like.
I left it over there, so I'm sure you did.
Your left, my right.
Lindy, I will say a few words before you come up.
Mr. Gavin, article five.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Gavin. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you all for being here this evening and I have the pleasure of making the motion on article five and I move to approve article five as written, written in the warrant, except the words "to do" or "to act thereon."
May I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've been asked to say just a couple of quick words about this article before I introduce the sponsor, present, presenter. You may recall back now two years ago at annual town meeting, this, a very similar article came before town meeting and there was a lengthy discussion and as a result of many good concerns that were raised by a number of citizens, the article at that time failed. So as a result, the Board of Selectmen decided that we would create a group that would work on trying to find a solution to this problem that was more encompassing and more, you know, welcoming to a lot of the ideas that came up that evening at town meeting. And I'm pleased to say that I think the residents of the town and the town meeting voters will be as enthused as I am about the results that have come from this particular effort. So I have the pleasure of introducing Lindy Gier, who will be the presenter. And before I let her take the podium, she should be applauded along with her team for the effort and the time that, for the effort and the time that she put into this, along with their entire team, because it was a tremendous amount of work and it will benefit the town over the time. So thank you very much.
As David Gavin mentioned, I'm Lindy Gier. I live on McKinley Street and I'm Chair of the Coolidge School Working Group. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. So I have a, I have this in my hand because if you recall, at the 2018 special town meeting, I asked if I could come up on stage and I encouraged the Board of Selectmen to press the pause button on selling the Coolidge School because I really wanted to save the sledding hill. And so when that happened afterwards, I found out that people really wanted to see other things saved as well. So dozens of people came up to me afterwards and these are the things that they wanted to save. On the left, you see the Coolidge School when it was newly built, very grand, something to be proud of. In the middle, you see the park during the height of summer. The Girl Scouts have a garden there. There's a nice playground. Graffiti had not yet marred the school in the back. You'll see other pictures from later. So something to be proud of again. And then the sledding hill, so many of us have memories of that. So these are the three things that we heard most from citizens that you really wanted to preserve if the idea of selling the school came to fruition. While we heard you, our team worked on the foundation of the Coolidge School Reuse Task Force from 2015. They had reached out to dozens of people across the community who had many of the same ideas in mind. Our group took it a little bit further and here's the progress that we've made to date. When the Board of Selectmen formed the Coolidge School Working Group in October of 2018, so we've been meeting every couple of weeks for a year, what they asked us to do was to look at options for the future use of the school. And we held public meetings every two weeks. A lot of people came to those, as well as we had public update meetings at the library in May and June. We had three or four of them where anyone could come and look at the progress so far. So we received a lot of great feedback from that. So as a result of basically your input, our group took your ideas and put them in the form of what we call a request for proposal, RFP for short. And these are the nine things we asked for in the RFP. A lot of people told us, oh, you're aiming too high, you won't get those. But we thought, shoot for the moon, or is it, shoot for the stars, you'll land on the moon. You get what I'm saying here. So the main things we heard you say that you wanted, many of you wanted to preserve the building's historic exterior. The historic commission, we have a person on our team, Ken Newhauser, who wrote the exterior preservation requirements. Maintain town ownership of the park rather than an easement. And as part of that, don't just maintain town ownership of the park, but make sure that we can easily access the sledding hill. So that was a key piece. And then for the neighbors and also for us, because this building is a heritage piece, we really were not wanting to see a lot of new development there. We really wanted to see anything done be done within the current footprint of the building, meaning the four walls and the roof. Now, I don't know about you, but I hear more and more of my neighbors talking about how Maynard is becoming a place that is difficult to financially afford. So a lot of people also said, oh, if you're going to renovate this, could you please include some affordable housing units so that the teachers, the firefighters, the police officers, other middle-income people, hard-working people like us, might actually be afford to, to live in Maynard long-term? So that's where the fourth, and you see the asterisk next to each of these four? That's because they were weighted more heavily. We placed more value on these. So there were nine criteria that went into the RFP. The remaining five are here. Of course, we want some financial benefit to, to result from that. But notice there's no asterisk. I'll explain that in a minute. You're saying, why not financial benefit be, be the highest? I'll explain that on the next slide. Also, this ties in somewhat with the articles that you saw earlier. You know, rising tide lifts all ships. We want to be proud of what's in Maynard and this school is at the top of a hill and it's in the sightline, so it's a first impression of what people have in our town. And so we want it to look great and we asked for ideas to improve the exterior, the part that is facing Parker Street. Elmwood would be great too and certainly all facades, but that is a line of sight, not just for us, but for neighboring towns. We want to be proud of it. The next one is provide enhancements to the park and the neighborhood. We asked for a lot of playground equipment to the tune of one hundred thousand dollars, figuring, well, if we get it, great. If not, that's okay. We've asked for it and, and we were really proud to have that in the RFP. And then I happen to like trees and I led some, you know, climate summits and so our team agreed that we wanted to see the building use energy efficient if it is renovated, to put energy efficiency options in there. And then you see the last one, the ninth criteria that we put into the RFP was that we want developers who are excited to work on the Coolidge. You know, we want their eyes to light up. We, we don't just want them to be in it for the money and we also want them to be developers who have done other historic renovation projects. It's sort of a different bird when you're doing renovation. So those were the nine things in the RFP. Now, when I talk about the Coolidge School, and I'm going to use my laser pointer here. So this is the building and in the map that you'll see in a moment, it's also in your packet, our team is proposing that we sell the building as well as this little chunk of land at the top of the hill and this chunk of land where the parking lot currently is. Now, some of that land will still retain under town ownership and I'll show you that on the next slide. But the reason we have all of this up here is so that you can see, there's a huge plot of land. The part that we're suggesting be sold off with the school is one-half acre, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty square feet to be exact. There's another two acres of park below the school, between the school and Parker Street, that our team strongly believes needs to stay in town hands. Just, you know, just like time, land is something that you never get back. So here's what I'm talking about and, and I'll walk you through a few of the things, although they're, they're up on the slide already, but just to orient, orient you. Whoops, sorry about that. Okay. So this is Bancroft Street and the blue is the school. This is the front of the school facing Bancroft Street. Over here you have, whoops, over here you have Elmwood Street. And then way down below would actually be off this slide, the two acres of park land ends at Parker Street. So when you hear me talk about the back of the school, I'm talking about this part that sticks out and there are also fire escapes here and here. So our team, we actually looked at other options before we suggested selling the school. A lot of us like parkland and open space and as I said, you can never get land back. So we looked at demolition first. The quotes ran from four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars and given the other repairs our town needs to make, we just cannot afford to do that. It also doesn't bring in any tax revenue. Before we gave up on that idea, we also looked at selective demolition where demolishing something occurs slowly and the floorboards and other expensive pieces inside can bring you some money. We thought that might offset the cost of demolition and it didn't. So regretfully, we realized that demolition was not an option for our town. So we looked, we turned then to looking at, okay, who could we sell the school to? Who could preserve it and renovate it and, and do well by it? So that drove the RFP. Our town engineer and his landscaping firm came up with several designs. If you followed the progress, it's gone through several iterations. This is the most recent. It would be this dashed line here. Part of the parking lot would be sold off with the school and then this would remain so that density requirements are planning and zoning board. You have to have certain density requirements. So initially, we were going to keep this part, but we decided to sell that off so that we could get closer to the density requirements. It's just a small chunk of land here. The paths that you see are paths, this tan, these are paths that go back to the hillside that's built into the hill as well as the sledding hill. And there's actually a path over to an overlook with some benches. So everything outside of this dashed line remains in town hands, including six to eight parking spaces. So this looks small, but remember, all of this, all of this, all the way up onto the ceiling, two acres beyond stays in town hands, which was our main goal. ceiling, two acres beyond, stays in town hands, which was our main goal. So I'll come back to this later, in case you have any questions. So what does a yes vote mean? Well, essentially, a yes vote gives the Board of Selectmen permission to sell the building and that small half-acre of land surrounding it at the top of the hill. Now, you might think, wow, this will be great. We can get a lot of money for this building, because we have a lot of projects that need to happen. But here's the bad news. The building is so far gone that it needs over $3 million in repairs. And that's a low estimate. If I use cost of living adjustments, it could very well go up to $4 million in repairs. So that saddened our team to find that out, and it took a while for us to get used to it. So I know it will for you as well. The other piece is that we had a market valuation done, and so the half-acre of land that we're selling is worth about $600,000. And so if you take $600,000 value minus $3 million in repairs, we're really in a hole in terms of the value of this building. So that's why we were really looking for someone who loved historic preservation and could renovate it. They won't see, you know, people won't see a profit right away, but they may over time once they renovate it. So your yes vote allows the Board of Selectmen, our team will be making a recommendation within the next week to the Board of Selectmen, and it allows them to move forward with one of the people who submitted a proposal. The financial benefits for our town, right now, we spend about $25,000 per year maintaining the building. That's for hazard insurance, that costs around $11,000. And then on top of that, you have another $14,000 in fuel and electrical costs, so that the plumbing doesn't go as well. So if we allow the, you know, Board of Selectmen to move forward, we won't have that cost anymore. Then we also have the initial offer price. Now, again, finance wasn't our big thrust, because we knew that the building had a negative value. I don't want to go into the details of the proposals, but I can tell you that they ranged from an offer of $1,000 on initial price to $50,000 on initial price. And then the ongoing property tax revenue. Whoever buys the building and renovates it, they will, our town will get property tax each year. The estimates are that it could be anywhere from $30,000 to $100,000. It would really depend on the quality of what goes in there. So, and we would get that each year. So those are the, you know, pros of voting yes to selling the school. Now, you know, a no vote is, you know, you need to know what that entails, too. Certainly, a no vote means that the Board of Selectmen will not be able to sell the property, but it sets off a chain reaction that will make it even more damaging. So we have some strong proposers. A no vote means at least another year of waiting to sell this. They'll probably walk away to find other projects. The historical preservation, the one good thing that came out of the building being in such disrepair is that it will qualify for historic preservation tax credits. And so that's really the only way that it becomes financially viable as a project for people. Other people might try to fix it up a little bit, but it's just kicking the can down the road if you don't do a full historic preservation, which would mean exterior, which we had asked for in the RFP, but also interior. So recreational, we would get to keep the sledding hill and the entire park. And so, you know, if, you know, $600,000 for that upper half-acre, and you know, another two acres will remain in town hands, 600,000 times four, we have a $2.4 million park, and I don't think we want to give that away anytime soon. So the building will continue to deteriorate, it becomes unsellable, and then someone will have to demolish it, likely us as taxpayers having to foot the $600,000 bill. Maybe if we're lucky, a developer would demolish it, but then they would build all-new up there, and we lose part of our heritage. And my worry is, that beautiful photo of the school from behind with the park in the summer, just in the past four or five months, there's been a lot of deterioration. You see graffiti on it now. If I closed my eyes, I can imagine myself in any inner-city tenement building. And the interior is no better, unfortunately. So there you have it, the yes vote, what it gets us, versus a no vote, what it gets us. And now it's time for questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, must've been a good presentation, because we got no questions.
Wait a minute.
Oh, people are coming. Recognize the microphone to the right.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Hickey, and I am a resident at 40 Parker Street. I have a three-part question, actually. I'm wondering, is this gonna, if it's sold, will it be restricted only to residential sales, or is there a possibility that there could be businesses or medical use or something there? My second part is, how secure is it that this map that we're looking at with Section A and B, Lot A and Lot B, will, how do we know that will remain constant throughout the whole process and not change? And then my third question is, is there asbestos in the building, and if so, how will that be handled during renovation?
Yes. So I'm going to start with the easiest. Your third question, asbestos, there is asbestos in the building. There is also lead in the building. So whoever buys that property will need to remediate it before, you know, before it becomes livable or could be used by anyone.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the first one, you were asking, will this be residential, or could it be another use? The property is zoned general residential, which by virtue of being a general residential zoning, it allows, obviously, residences. It also allows nonprofit educational, but only nonprofit educational. So an example might be a college that's nonprofit. It also allows other nonprofit educational, like if a childcare center was nonprofit, or if the Boys and Girls Club, you know, needed it. We've already asked them, and it's not the building setup that they need. But those are the allowed uses. There are a couple of archaic things still on that zoning, such as, we could have a farm there. What do you think about a Maynard farm? But, and it also allows a club, but it really does not, it does not allow commercial use.
Okay, okay.
The whole town would have to come to a meeting, and the planning board would have to rezone, and we would all have to vote yes, that we want commercial use there. But I think general residential zoning was put there for a reason. We have plenty of other commercial zones in our town.
And would that include the for-profit educational that we just voted on tonight as well?
No, that was only in a specific area. So that does not change this at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the map as well?
Thank you for reminding me. I was going, oh, will I remember that third question. The map is really why our team wanted to send out the RFP prior to town meeting. It wasn't that we're trying to select before then, but what we're trying to do is to know what's out there. And I can say that two out of the three people who submitted a proposal went exactly with our lot line. Let me show you the map again. Their proposals use exactly that map.
But would they be required to, because I remember with the sledding meeting, there was, you know, a big concern about not having that angle.
Right. This is actually an interesting thing. In the RFP, our team put that the lot line can only vary by 300 square feet. So we cannot give away more than 300 square feet to anyone who, beyond that lot line, to anyone who put in a proposal.
Okay.
And here's the reason for that. We thought about getting a formal survey again, but those cost a couple of thousand dollars. And so we didn't want to pay several thousand dollars and then get in something that was different and have to do the survey all over again. So VHB, the contracting firm, the engineering firm that the town uses, used the prior survey to create this conceptual lot line. It may change by a few inches here or there, once the formal survey gets done, because that's much more accurate. But that's why our team put in that 300-square-foot buffer.
And it wouldn't go beyond that buffer, then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right.
All right, so.
Oh, come on, more questions.
Recognize the microphone to the right.
Sorry, Nancy O'Rourke, Sunset Road. Are we open to accepting proposals outside your RFP, or are we just limiting the sale of the property to people who only do what we want them to do?
So how I would answer that is, a lot of thought on the part of townspeople, first at the town meeting in 2018, as well as now, was put into the RFP. I actually don't consider it our team's RFP. I consider us putting the words of the majority of citizens down on paper. And so I would say that the RFP has been out there, and it's pretty clear as to what the townspeople want. I'm not saying we're meeting everyone's needs. For example, a lot of my friends wanted demolition, but once we found out the cost, we couldn't do that.
And what happens if it doesn't sell? Is it going to sit there for sale for ages and ages because we're not getting an RFP that we want?
Well, the RFP was actually issued on August 1st, so there's nine criteria, and this is way thicker than I want to read off, but, you know, it's about 60 pages long, full of details on what we as townspeople want. So that went out for bid on August 1st, and we received the submissions on October 3rd. And so our team is wrapping up, as we speak, our ratings and our recommendations to, because we're only recommending, it's the Board of Selectmen who would pick which one of those three RFPs go forward. Not to belabor the point, but if you're interested, all three of the proposals from three people who responded are online on our town website. So just go under.
I'm just asking if the sales don't go through on those three, then what happens with the sale?
Yeah, then the building would likely sit empty, and...
Just like 129 Parker.
So we're getting a little bit on the scope of the article here, because there's a wholesale process that after it is approved.
Yeah, and those are sort of separate. The vote today is really only on the article, whether or not to allow the Board of Selectmen to sell the property, the property listed, and with the three, you know, with the small variants. It really doesn't get into the RFPs. There will be future public meetings where they talk about the RFPs.
Recognize the microphone to my right.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Scraw from 23 Marlborough Street. I had a question about your revenue numbers for the town. What would happen in what I might call the worst-case scenario? Someone does buy it and then doesn't do anything. It just sits there in the current state. What would be the income we would get just on the real estate tax if it's undeveloped?
Right. And that is actually, we asked to relay the question to the people we were interviewing. We said, what if a recession hit and you weren't able to complete the project? Have you ever had that happen? What, you know, what is your solvency in terms of handling that? The proposers have reassured us that they can handle that. So unlikely, but I'm going to turn to Greg Johnson at this point, because he's our procurement agent, as well as town administrator. And he usually puts in place during negotiations, certain project timelines that need to be met, and he could tell you more about that.
Mr. Moderator, Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. As Lindy pointed out, with the approval of this article, the Selectmen would be asked if I could negotiate on their behalf a purchase-sell agreement for that property. Within those terms of the agreement, I would work with legal counsel to set in certain conditions, which may include progress status or at least reporting, which may be waived according to circumstances that the Selectmen would then allow or not allow. So it would be worked out. We would negotiate with that firm, whoever was the top-ranked proposal, to see the progress of the project at hand. Am I...
I think we've gotten pretty far from the question I was asking, which is, what's the real estate tax if there's no development but there is a sale?
Do you have the answers? So our labor, our legal counsel, Lisa Meehan, is saying it's taxed at whatever the value is, and I can't speak to what the current value of the property is right now.
Okay, I guess we're ready to vote? And before we vote, I would like to give you the results of the previous article. There were 42 noes. It had to pass by two-thirds, so that means we had to have 84 or better yeses, and we had 283, so the article passes. On Article Number Five, ballot number 12. This is a secret ballot, because it involves real estate, and it also is two-thirds. Okay, I guess we'll move on to Article Six.
Good evening. I move to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant, accept the words, or pass any vote or take any action thereon.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, presentation.
Hey folks, my name is Elliot Prisby. I live at Elmhurst Road in Maynard, and I also own a business in downtown Maynard. This warrant article would allow the Board of Selectmen to sell, oh, I'm sorry, that's not the right one. (laughter) We already decided that, so. All right. Maynard is a strong community comprised of diverse individuals. At this time, there's no current police policy in town that specifically aims at protecting undocumented members of our community when interacting with local law enforcement. From a public safety standpoint, assistance from various immigrant populations is especially important when an immigrant, whether documented or not, is the victim of or witness to a crime. It is essential that these individuals do not feel uncomfortable or intimidated in coming forward with the requisite information and general firsthand knowledge to aid in investigating a particular crime. This type of mutual trust and cooperation is crucial in preventing and solving crime incidents, as well as maintaining public order, safety, and security in the entire community. To this end, accepting this article would recommend that the Board of Selectmen adopt a policy regarding the protection of all citizens when interacting with federal agencies. All right, let's see if I can get this to work. Okay, there we go. So, uh, as we just said, Article Six is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that ensures an equitable experience for immigrants living in the town of Maynard. A yes vote signals to the Board of Selectmen that we as a town believe that this is a topic worthy of discussion, consideration, and action. So, you can see the whole large petition, it's four pages long, written out in the warrant. That's what we're suggesting, um, but this is a non-binding recommendation, so it's important for people to note that even if we do vote for this at the meeting right now, that it's not necessarily guaranteed that that is what the Board of Selectmen will do. There is a whole process, uh, if it does pass, where, um, there will be various committees at the Board of Selectmen meetings, and the Human Relations Committee will sit down and address the various pieces of the article one by one. So there's not necessarily, if you're voting yes on this, you're not voting yes for the entire article from the first word to the last word. Uh, this is very much up for negotiation and it is very much open to, uh, input from residents. Okay. I'll keep going and I'll make myself shorter. (laughter) A no vote signals to the Board of Selectmen that we as a town are willing to, uh, spend our tax revenues enforcing federal laws, and we as a town do not wish to create policies that result in improved safety and equitable experiences for all residents.
All right. So, um, Danielle Pimenta. Why do we need it? We need a policy that reflects the values of Maynard residents. We need to put in, put in, put the practices we currently have in written-down policies so we can guide the interactions with federal agencies. In other words, we need to codify many of the practices we already have. We need to have great discussions about possible gaps that we, we have currently. In addition, when we look at research of what has happened to towns, especially small towns, that have passed welcoming policies, we see that there is, uh, over 35 fewer crimes per 10,000 residents. The median income average increases by over $4,000. Poverty rates decreases by 2.3%, and unemployment rates also decreases by over 1%. So we see that there, there are many positive impacts to the whole town when welcoming policies are adopted. In other words, our tax dollars should be spent on making our community safe and not enforcing federal law.
Sorry. So we covered this a little bit, but Article Six is not a mandate. It's a recommendation that will be subject to revision by the Human Relations Committee, which consists of Maynard residents, Police Chief Mark Dubois, and the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Chris De Silva. We encourage residents to attend upcoming Human Relations Committee meetings to offer their input to a finalized welcoming recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
So we're asking, you can, you can just say it. So we're asking you today to vote yes. Closer, okay. It's my height. (laughter) So we're asking you today to vote yes, um, to start this conversation so our community can come together and develop policies that really reflect our values.
You want to say it?
Yep.
Okay, discussion. I recognize the central microphone.
Uh, my name is Christine Bell. I live on Michael Road. Um, I would vote against this article. Um, it's, you know, ICE is a federal law enforcement, and I think that our police should be cooperating with all other law enforcement in the United States. We would, we would expect that the Maynard Police would cooperate with the FBI or the alcohol, tobacco, firearms. If you arrested me for shoplifting tomorrow and then you found out that there was a warrant for defrauding elderly people, you would turn me over to the FBI. So I think we should be following the nation. We're a nation of laws. If you want to change the federal law, I personally think you should call Senator Warren or our congressman and decide that's where federal law should be. This is a town, and I think our Maynard Police should be, um, supporting law enforcement throughout Massachusetts and the country.[983.82][983.85](applause).
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, I'm gonna have a lengthy rebuttal, uh, to either the Police Department. Uh, hello, um, Michael Noble, Lieutenant with the Maynard Police Department. Uh, I'm also a resident part of the road. Okay, uh, first and foremost, you know, the Police Department prides itself on, uh, our community policing and how much we are in the community. And that's, uh, one thing that we have never done. We've never asked a citizen what their immigration status is. It's just not what we do. If you could turn a slide, one please? Okay, right here is our mission statement, okay? It, "To efficiently provide quality police service to a community by promoting a safe environment with an emphasis on treating everyone equally with trust, integrity, fairness, and professionalism. Our core values are integrity, professionalism, compassion, teamwork, and community satisfaction." Police Department believes we hit these, uh, core values in this mission statement, and we do a good job of doing it. And we, the feedback we have got from the citizens of the town, uh, agree with that. We absolutely agree that victims should come forward. You know, we actually, you know, absolutely agree that that, if that is, uh, something that we propose. Uh, however, this petition goes much further than victims, okay? This proposal, this petition protects suspects and disregards the victims of those persons. I'll, I'll get into that a little later, of, of where it doesn't make it safer, okay? First, you know, to create a policy for the Police Department without police input and without, uh, over the objection of the police is just not good, uh, practice, you know? If you could go back a little, uh, to that, uh, to one of those statements, I'll tell you when.
You're, you're welcome to come up to the podium as you have an official presentation.[1108.33][1108.35](applause). You'll have a chance to vote.
Okay, this, this statement here is, you know, um, disingenuous at best and a complete false statement. We as a Police Department do not enforce federal law. It's not in our mandate, it's not what we do and we not do. Do we support federal agencies? Absolutely at times, but we don't enforce federal laws. Okay? And as a town, we do not wish, uh, to create policies that result in improved safety. I, our policies, we're an accredited Police Department, which means our policies, uh, follow the best police practices. And our policies do incorporate many of the things that are in this, such as immigration status means nothing, uh, to us. Uh, we help anyone that asks for it, and we don't ask for immigration status. Okay, we don't enforce immigration laws. Our policies incorporate, and we, uh, showed the petitioners this. Uh, now, again, I said it's a little disingenuous to say that our, if we don't pass this, it doesn't reflect our values. Our policies absolutely reflect our values. And if anybody wants a copy of the policies, you know, you can email me and I'll email you a copy of all our policies, provided the ones that have to do with security and that we shouldn't release for public safety. Okay. You know, our, our approach has always been, the best way to reach the community is to be out in the community. Uh, we are always out at the town functions, we are out at this. I have never heard anybody say that we haven't helped a victim, or we, we turned it. Even at the Selectmen's meeting, when they were presenting this and we were, were presenting our rebuttal, uh, they couldn't come up with an incident, incidence where we did not help somebody or that this policy would have affected. However, we could come up with several, uh, cases or incidents that if we didn't help federal agencies or vice versa, that it would have affected, uh, the town's safety. Many of you, many of those incidents are, are public, that went on TV. Those type of incidences that we couldn't, uh, help people. So, uh, one of the things that, you know, we, I, I want to touch on is, why would anybody feel that it's not safe to call the police? And, uh, what we found, you know, through our experience, sometimes it's a cultural issue that, that they, they fear, uh, the authority and they feel this. But another thing is the anti-police rhetoric that is told and said on social media, on this, by some of the petitioners and some of this. So they're sending a mixed message where they want you, you, to us to abide by this petition, but then on social media, they tell them, don't trust the police. Again, that is one of the things we have to stop and we have to, uh, support. I think, I think, you know, uh, the officers on my department do an excellent job in our other community, and I haven't heard one complaint about how we have treated, uh, any other citizens in town. Finally, uh, how this doesn't make it safe. Okay, uh, in, in the sections that it has, ICE notifications and requests, uh, well, the first one, ICE holds an administrative warrant, you know, the detainers. That has already been decided, uh, by the Supreme Judicial Court. Supreme Judicial Court in Commonwealth v. Lund decided that police cannot hold solely on a detainer. We never have and never will. Okay, the ICE notification request has critical problems. The public records law allows ICE to access to most of our records. We cannot shut them off, just like we couldn't shut off, uh, any citizen in town from our public records. Okay? We, uh, follow the best police practices, and best police practices do not limit the flow of, uh, flow of information between agencies. Okay? The ICE access to records or facilities, we have, this could jeopardize, uh, you know, people's safety in more than one way. ICE may have, uh, not have a warrant, but may have a person of interest that they're going after, uh, and that they call us and ask that, or vice versa. They may give us information on a person in town, or a person that might be traveling through town, that they're looking for, that they wanted for a dangerous crime. And we're not to talk to them, we're not to communicate with them, just doesn't make the town safer. Okay? And finally, one of the other things is that we have to notify the people in a, uh, in the cell. This, you know, just doesn't pass the common sense test that if somebody we lock up for a minor, minor crime, say disturbing the peace, but ICE is looking for him for a, a major felony, and we have to go notify them, uh, in that. That's what some of the, uh, things in this petition state. Now, as, as they said, we have been willing to work with them, uh, and we said that at the Selectmen's meeting. And we thought that, uh, they were gonna, and it was gonna be done on the Human Relations Committee, which the Police Department was the one that proposed this. And we think that's the best course of action for obvious reasons, because they agree that this isn't gonna, uh, there's stuff in this that could be revised, there's things in this that could be, uh, fixed. So we believe that the Human Relations Committee is the best course of action to come to a policy that, uh, both is safe and welcoming. That's it, thank you.[1460.42][1460.45](applause).
Let me be clear here. We're a legislative body. I expect you people to listen to the pros and the cons and to come to a decision. I'm gonna make this a secret ballot. We're not gonna legislate here through intimidation. I do not expect any more clapping. I recognize the microphone to my right.
My questions have been answered.
Mr. Moderator?
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hi, uh, Whitney Oertalik, Taylor Road. Um, I am speaking today as a member of the Steering Committee of the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance, and, um, the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance, our mission acknowledges that racism against people of color exists and that it is unjust and harmful. We're a group of Maynard community members dedicated to learning with and supporting individuals in our community who seek to confront and take action to dismantle systemic racism. And on the, on behalf of the Steering Committee of the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance, I'm making a statement in support of Article Six to recommend that the Board of Selectmen work to make Maynard a welcoming town. A vote, a vote in support of this article is a vote in favor of the best of Maynard. Making Maynard a welcoming town will do two things. A, put into written policy things that the Maynard Police Department has let us know that they're already doing. And B, by doing so, allow immigrants living in Maynard to feel comfortable approaching and communicating with the police, including reporting crimes. Maynard has long been a town known for its welcoming community, a point that many have made recently. Those of us who have moved here in the last years and decades have done so in part exactly because of this, because we see Maynard as a community where residents appreciate one another because of their differences, and because we appreciate the diversity in this community and the benefits that diversity brings. Immigrants play a central role in making Maynard a vibrant community and a model for communities around us. We have an opportunity through our vote on Article Six to show the best of Maynard and to send a message that this community is supportive and welcoming to all.
I recognize the microphone in the center.
Thank you, sir. Lauren Gilzig, I live on McKinley. Uh, prior to moving to Massachusetts, I was a patrol officer for the Los Angeles Police Department. I have seven years working in immigrant communities. I must strongly disagree with the federal officer who spoke and concur with the lieutenant. This is not a kumbaya issue. This is not a make immigrants feel good issue. This is a public safety issue. Crime exists in immigrant communities in direct, in inverse proportion to how free they feel to engage with the Police Department. Once crime is rooted in an immigrant community, because they feel isolated and fearful of engaging with the police, it never fails to spread. So, by voting no on this, you are placing yourselves at jeopardy. Is there anything in this proposal that makes the Maynard Police Department or Maynard Government non-responsive to a lawful writ by the federal government? No. They come in with good paper, they're going to get the cooperation they want. This is a massive issue across this country. It is divisive and it is dangerous, and we cannot scale it down to fit Maynard. We have to play the game the way it lies here. And the way it lies here is isolating immigrants is going to work against our interests. How you view immigration is completely up to you. And how you view the role of government in being welcoming or isolating, or if you want to build a wall between us and Shrewsbury, you can do that. But again, based on my very strong experience, I would vote yes to this. Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Yes, Lauren Acton Heath, Walnut Street. Um, I think this is, uh, somewhat disappointing, just because the theory of law here is sound. We don't want anyone on a minor offense going to jail and due to a voluntary, uh, release of their immigration status to ICE, which had nothing to do with the offense, uh, you know, make them afraid of the police, make them afraid of deportation. That said, associating this with welcoming or friendliness or anything else of that nature is totally missing the point. It either is or is not harming our community. I think this needs to be refocused and I, the way it was portrayed in that, uh, that other slide, as voting no is, I forget the exact wording, but it was very poorly put. I think this needs to be rethought and also discussed and approved by our local police forces. But again, I think the theory of law is sound, and I think the officer said they are already adhering to the spirit of the law. So maybe more discussion, and this could be rebroadened and voted on. Uh, I would vote yes, but, uh, I, I think it needs to be better put.
Thank you. I recognize the microphone to the right.
Yeah, I'm Bronwyn Wurta, Oak Ridge Drive. Um, so I first want to remind everybody that again, we're not voting on this ourselves, we're voting for it to be discussed, so that's just really important to remember, that there still will be further discussion. But I just want to remind everybody that Maynard is a town that is built on immigrants. But I just want to remind everybody that Maynard is a town that is built on immigrants and if you just go to the cemetery, you can see all of the names. The Italians, the Finns, the Russians, the Poles. Hope I don't leave anybody out. My grandparents came from Finland, myself. And I just want to say that many of them were fleeing for their lives as well and many people here in Maynard as well as other places need a sense of safety because many of them are fleeing for their lives. So this kind of, this kind of discussion and this kind of decision does create a sense of safety, creates a sense of community and brings us together so that we really are following through with what we want everyone to be able to, how everyone, want everybody to be able to succeed if they come to this country. So let's just be reminded of who we are and where we've come from.
I recognize the microphone to the center.
Thank you, sir. My name is Ella Whitney. I live on Aspen Street in Maynard. I'm a former police officer in Maynard. I'd like to direct my questions to Mr. Prisby, if I may. Mr. Prisby, these statistics you came up with, do you encounter or consider Long Island, Los Angeles, Baltimore, Chicago and the problems they have with illegal immigration slash undocumented individuals in this status report you gave?
I don't understand the question. Did I consider those cities?
Yes. Did you consider them in your statistics?
Of course.
You did? And that's what you came up with?
Yes. And we have found, and we have found, as Danielle said, that cities and towns across the country that have adopted welcoming policies or sanctuary, become sanctuary cities or whatever it is that you want to call it, have, as Danielle said, seen a reduction in crime and a boost to their economies.
Okay, would you say that in this country, there's somewhere around 20 million illegal immigrants in this country currently? Somewhere in that vicinity? Is that correct?
Yeah, where are you going with that question?
Well, the question I'm, I'm gonna get to in a moment here is Thomas Holman, okay? The ICE director, former ICE director, an expert in the field, more so than you or I, okay? He stated, okay, that this philosophy of cooperation that you refer to, okay, by immigrants, most of these people are embedded with friends or I might add gangs or other illegal individuals. And as such, they're very reluctant to come forward and they do not cooperate. And he's more of an expert than you, sir, or me.
That's not...
Thomas Holman, the ICE director, former ICE director, 40 years of law enforcement. How many years of experience do you have in law enforcement, sir?
Mr. Moderator, is that question relevant?
No.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, furthermore, my, my wife, okay, is an immigrant, okay? She came through here, here through a legal process, okay? These people coming in this country illegally should wait in line and go through just like everybody else. Therefore, they're checked for diseases, criminality and everything else. They shouldn't go ahead of the line.
There are a lot of people who feel that way and I understand where you're coming from. The issue is that a lot of these people are fleeing horrible situations of famine, gang violence, the economic destabilization of their societies. The immigration process, if done the right way, as romanticized by the Ellis Island era in which we no longer live, can take anywhere. The shortest amount of time that it takes is about five years. It can take for someone to do this the right way, all the way up to 28 years. I mean, these people are...
So, I'm gonna interrupt here because we're drifting from the subject.
Well, I have some other questions.
The measure at hand is whether Article Six is a policy that we want to draw.
I'm, I'm against the article on various...
Immigration policy on a national basis is not open for discussion here at this meeting.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I'm against the article because we should have full cooperation with all federal law enforcement wherever legally applicable, okay? This is a fantasy bill, in my opinion. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Please. I recognize the microphone to my left.
Uh, so just to quote a section here. "Notwithstanding any provision of federal, state or local law, a federal, state or local government entity or official may not prohibit or in any way restrict any government entity or official from sending to receiving from the Immigration Naturalization Service information regarding the citizenship immigration status, et cetera." The point being, how specifically... Sorry. Yeah, just quoting Section A from the definitions, one. I ask the sergeant, how specifically do you feel that even if this was implemented by the Board of Selectmen, as is, it would restrict your duties?
As it's stated, this is only a suggestion to the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
But I was brought up, okay? My father taught me at a young age, if something's worth doing, it's worth doing right. And you should start with the Human Relations Committee that we suggested, that we do this. So we provide a policy that everybody can agree on. Not one that is just, oh, well, we're gonna fix it later. Okay? That's not, that's not good practice, it's not good policy.
Pardon me, but that's not actually the question I asked. I was asking what specific parts of this proposal, specific parts of this proposal would restrict your duties?
Under the recommendations, number C, D, E. Number C, D and E are the main ones. And of course, the reporting is kind of a contradict, contradiction because if this were to pass and we don't cooperate with them with information, why would we need to keep track of the stats? And as they say, why would we be using taxpayer dollars to do a political or the federal government to see how many people that, that they're setting detainers on if we're not holding on to detainers?
Okay, move on to the next person.
Fair.
I recognize the microphone to the right.
Yes. Hello, my name's Elizabeth Steiner Milligan. I have a short, before Lincoln Street, a short question and a comment, okay? A short question. How do the, how does the Human Relations Committee work with the Board of Selectmen?
About a month ago, Elliot came in and put this in front of us. We had the police chief in attendance, Mike Noble was in attendance and we talked about it. And we, we agreed that we would create a Human Relations Commission and that the Human Relations Commission was gonna speak to the items in this article, one at a time, go down the list, with the police, with Elliot and his group and with several other community members that had an interest in being a part of the group. And we were gonna work through the solutions to get to where everybody was happy. We haven't had a meeting yet because we're waiting for the end of the outcome of tonight, but regardless of whether the vote is yes or no, we'll still have a Human Relations Committee in place. Because we've already placed people on the committee and we're ready to go. We're just waiting to see which direction we're gonna go. So we haven't formulated a hierarchical committee insofar as naming chairpeople or, you know, secretaries because we have not met, but, you know, it's gonna be a collaborative effort and, you know, to get Maynard the best of these proposals.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the other thing I wanted to say is I really think that it would be good if we just deescalate a little bit and thought about who's actually able to make decisions about this. It's good for the, our leaders to hear us express our opinions, but it's gonna be the Board of Selectmen and the police that decide this. And I don't also, don't, and I think so we should vote yes and give it to them, let them deal with it because they know this way better than we do and they know what's at stake. I've dealt a lot with immigration over the past couple of years and there's so much fear. You don't see any immigrants here and there's a reason, they're scared to death and they're, and I would understand it if I were a recent immigrant. It's really important that we message, whatever we do, no matter how little, that we send a message that we're going to make us that don't have to be scared. I mean, still comply with the law, of course. And our police do a great job. But do what we can and at least start this conversation is great, that's all.
I think, I think you misunderstood what I said.
Okay.
Because I didn't say the police and the Selectmen were gonna decide anything. What I said was the police, the Selectmen, Elliot, Danielle, several people that they selected to be on the committee, okay? And we only selected ourselves. The rest of the committee was selected by Elliot and Danielle and that group will make the decisions. The police and the Selectmen will have a voice, but we're not gonna make the decisions. The group in its entirety will make the decisions.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so this isn't going to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, it is. The, the Human Relations Committee and the police will meet, discuss all the issues with a wide range of people. As a matter of fact, the second person in line, a young gentleman over there, came, came and met with us and he's part of the committee, correct? Yep, Mike, he's on our committee. So he's gonna be part of the committee. So it's a, it's a diverse group. Before we start, it's a very diverse group and all that group will do will make recommendations to the Selectmen.
Right. Right, I'm sorry, I have two...
So, so if the, so if there, if the group is making the suggestions to the Selectmen, that's, that's the direction we're gonna head.
Right. And the group would include a representative of the Select Board as well as the Chief of Police, correct?
The, the Chief of Police or a designee.
Or some, yeah.
But I am not on the committee, I'm a liaison to the committee.
Okay, but there will be input from...
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I, I'm sorry, I, first thing was the question and then I just sent me another comment. Thank you.
Okay, I recognize the microphone in the middle. And before you start, somebody in ladies room left their cellphone. Go ahead.
My name is Sheri Zitter. I'm from Lewis Street. I have been a social worker for about 36 years and I understand the gentleman who spoke at this mic before me, you know, was very concerned about gangs and, you know, other safety issues. And I want to let him know that I don't want Maynard to, any Maynard residents to feel less safe because of a policy like this. And I also have worked with many families in my career who are desperately trying to stop gangs, even people in their family. And if it was safe for them, would wanna come forward and, you know, work, work with police around that because they know that gangs are not helpful and are ruining the communities that they're in. So I would like to offer, is it possible for me to offer an amendment to this proposal?
You'll have to go back and write up your amendment and present it here. I have to have it in writing.
Okay, so it's...
If you notice on the door.
So go to the end of the line and present it in writing to you?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Because I really don't want this issue to divide the town, but I think there's ways that we can all work together that are already outlined here. Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
When it comes to this policy...
Please identify yourself.
Mike Lassasa, Waltham Street. When it comes to this policy, it doesn't mean we don't enforce the law. We do. But we do it in a way that doesn't impose fear on other people. The fact that we've had ICE arrest people in Maynard before strikes fear into a lot of people that are here undocumented. And these are people that are just trying to live their lives, like you and me. People that are just afraid to go to work or go to school because they're worried they're gonna get picked up by ICE. It's happened all across the country. It's happened here once and it's not, it's not right, in my opinion. But when it comes to this policy, this could help a lot of people. Please, everybody consider that.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Yeah, this is Roger Stillwater, Sunset. I have a question for the police officer there. We've, on NPR this morning, they discussed the situation in Boston with the Boston Police Department that had a liaison officer working with ICE and turning people in for very minor offenses, holding people for ICE. And this was, you know, the, the mayor has tried to present Boston as a welcoming city. This was not the message that the mayor was sending and the officer's been reassigned. I'd like to know, in a practical sense, what, how that situation is different. Obviously, Maynard doesn't have a liaison officer and all, but how do you work with ICE? And what, in the last year or so, what kinds of interaction have you had with ICE, particularly around minor offenses?
Okay, I just want to explain because I, I think probably many people don't understand. We have never contacted ICE. We have never called them about anybody, we never will. It's not in our mandate. However, any person that gets arrested gets fingerprinted. And those fingerprints go to a state police database and that database is also hooked up to the federal database. And that is how they're notified. We don't notify them. Mike said that, you know, somebody with ICE. That had nothing to do with the Maynard police. ICE can come in here and, and pick up anybody and we can't stop them. We're never gonna help them for civil immigration.
No, wait, whoa, whoa. If, if that's how it worked, then why did they have a liaison officer? And why did the liaison officer work with the police department?
That's Boston. We have policy that we don't notify, we don't ask for immigration status.
But if it all worked with fingerprints and as you're saying, they wouldn't need a liaison officer, they wouldn't need those 13 people trained.
I don't know if they fingerprint everybody in their policies. I don't know what that was. We can't hold anybody, we, and we never have, held anybody on strictly an ICE detainee or ICE reason, you know? The law is clear on that. The SJC passed the Commonwealth v. Lund. We can't hold anybody on that. If somebody's on a minor offense, we have to call the bail commissioner. Bail commissioner decides what to do. I don't know exactly, I, I've heard, I heard the story, but I don't know exactly the details of that story, of, of, of that officer. So I can't, I can't answer for why or how they did it. But I can tell you specifically, we have never contacted ICE. It's not something we do. We have been contacted by ICE.
Well, in the last two years... Sir, I'm gonna interrupt here because you're talking about a rogue officer who didn't follow policy, which is not germane to this discussion. So I'm gonna end that question.
All right.
I recognize the microphone in the center, please.
Wait, I have one, one other question.
You had your question. I will get back to you. Go to the end of the line, you can come back again. There's a lot of people waiting. I recognize the microphone in the center.
Good evening. My name is Ami Ledwell. I live at Glenn Drive. My specific question, and I want to preamble this by saying that I am strongly in support of being a welcoming town. I believe that it is very important to our community, and I stress that word, community, to be welcoming to everyone, whether they are documented or not, and to have all of those people feel safe. And I want to say that community includes all kinds of people. It includes children who are scared. Brown children in this town are scared that if they say something, their parents can be arrested or detained. There are all kinds of situations that make people feel scared and the current feeling in this country, the feeling that has been put into place because of the actions that we have seen by ICE in this country, specifically, for example, when they arrested many, many, many people in Texas and did not make accommodations for the children who were left behind. We don't want to see that kind of thing happen here in our town. We want to take care of all of our people, no matter what color their skin is, no matter where they are from, whether they are documented or not. So my question is, if we feel that way as a town, if we want to be welcoming, and I feel that we do in general want to be welcoming to everybody, what is the problem with presenting this position, petition to the Board of Selectmen as a possibility? This is not something that's carved in stone. This is something that recommends having this Human Relations Committee. This recommends talking between the Board of Selectmen, the Human Relations Committee and the police. What is the problem with putting that petition forward when all of these things, like your very Human Relations Committee suggestion at the end here, that's part of what has been presented as part of this petition? What's the problem with it?
Actually, that's incorrect because we suggested the Human Relations Committee a long time ago to answer these questions. I already said that there are certain things in this petition that does, that don't make the town safer. We, I, we understand the national debate, you know, we get that. This is not taking a side on the national debate. This has to do with just the policy. And if you're gonna do it right, and this is what was presented, and we said, why don't we work out a policy that everybody can agree on, everybody thinks is welcoming? And to, to not pass this doesn't, we're still gonna have the Human Relations Committee to pass it.
So if we pass this, how does it change? Because we're still not creating a law yet. We're still saying that we want to have a discussion about it. That's what the petition says.
In the police department... And the police department presented this prior to that, the Human Relations Committee was the discussion about it. And that's, we believe, is where it should be formulated. Because the police department was not involved in any of this. And as I've outlined, there are problems...
Okay, so you've had your follow-up question, ma'am. I recognize the microphone to my left.
Amanda Armsby, Butler Ave. I have a question for the officer who spoke. Is it Lieutenant Noble?
Yes.
Okay. So you referred a couple times to data or information you have about feedback from the community or an awareness of some sort that no one feels uncomfortable coming to the police. I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but that was kind of the gist of what you said. Is there, and I don't know, honestly, is there any data that you sort of have, you know, concrete data that you can share with us as townspeople, or is it just anecdotal?
Well, first off, it'd be to prove a negative that, you know, nobody's come forward.
Right.
But when, at the selectmen's meeting, when they were asked, like, how have we, the police not, you know, enforced immigration law or how that, there was not an incident that they could come up with. And that's why I say, we have not heard of any incidents that we have not been welcoming.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. So I would just wanna make the point that I think, you actually sort of made my point for me, it's proving a negative. I think you wouldn't hear from people who are afraid to talk to you. So I support the article. Just wanted to call out that clarification.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hi, my name is Claudia Stewart. I live on Garfield Street. I find this proposal really misleading in its saying that it's gonna reduce crime because I see this, really, people are throwing everything in here. This is not a race issue, and this is not an immigration issue, in my opinion. It's an issue around the law. I am the daughter of an immigrant. My grandparents on my mother's side were also immigrants. I've lived in Maynard for 20 years, and I've never felt unsafe caused by the police or by anything else in town. And so I find it really difficult to see that if we vote for it, we're good people, and if we vote for it, we're somehow bad, or we're somehow racist. I see this as a very anti-police rhetoric, and I see this as incredibly divisive. Because the issue is not immigration, it's about whether a person has a legal status to be here, period. And if they don't, and there's a crime, then there are repercussions. I do understand people come from different countries where their relationship with the police isn't great, and why they would be anxious to interact. But I think this article isn't gonna improve the situation, and I think it's incredibly divisive. It does not, you know, you say you wanna reflect the values of Maynard residents, it does not reflect my values. My values are to support the police and to support and uphold the law. And I don't see this doing it. And to say that I'm now an unwelcoming person is not okay. So how is this really not cherry-picking the laws you wanna enforce as support? That's my question. Because there's a lot of people out there who have reason to avoid the police, fugitives, criminals, a variety of other people. And yet I don't see you going out there and saying, we shouldn't alert anybody that they're here. But here, you're saying, if you do address this issue of a person being here legally or illegally, then you're somehow a bad person. And I find that incredibly divisive. So that's my question. How are you picking, cherry-picking which law you're gonna support?
We, I just wanna make it clear that this is not preventing the police from apprehending people who commit crimes. The goal is to protect immigrants in the town and to try to stop the, not stop the police, that's not really what I wanna say. We don't want people being arrested or detained on the basis of their immigration status alone. So if someone's an immigrant, undocumented or not, and they commit a crime, they're gonna be held accountable to that, and we're not trying to prevent that at all. What we are trying to do is to foster a, again, by voting yes on this, we're trying to say that, yes, this is a conversation that we wanna have, that we wanna move forward with. And we want to come up with a solution that works for everybody, with input from people on all sides of the issue, including the police and the Board of Selectmen, and moving forward. And I would invite you to partake in that conversation.
I don't support this, and I thank you for the offer.
Okay. I recognize the microphone in the center.
Can I just address one more thing? Mr. Moderator, do I have the permission to address one more thing?
After this question.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind if you went first, but, okay. Jane Audrey Newhauser, Main Street. I love this town, and I love the people in this town. And I have heard a lot of people expressing compassion, concern, and a reasonable approach to working on this problem. I heard that the Human Relations Committee is already getting together a group of people who are intending to work on this particular issue and take a look at what's in this particular article and other concerns. And I hope this isn't just kicking the can down the road. But I think for the sake of our community and our discussions, it might make sense for us to see what that committee comes up with first and then have a vote. So maybe we postpone this article until such time as the Human Relations Committee and all of these people who have been working so hard on this issue come back with their unified approach, and then we vote on being a welcoming town.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Could I approach? Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Could I approach?
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Finance Committee and I are appointed by the moderator to serve you, to take a look at these things ahead of time and to help you and as you make your decision. One of the wonderful things about New England Town Meeting is that a group of us can bring forward to Town Meeting something for consideration. And that's what somebody's done. And that's something, frankly, to be celebrated, whether we agree with it or not. It's a part of our democracy that we ought to celebrate. You have included in your, in the warrant was handed out, the Finance Committee's recommendations. I'm not gonna read through that. A couple points that I did wanna make out is that this is, as has been made plain to you, a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen in their role as police commissioners. And so if you believe that Maynard should have the best police practices, and you'd be inclined to vote no for this, then that no vote will pass this matter over to the Board of Selectmen for their consideration. That's what a no vote does. If you feel as though you would vote yes because you believe in increasing sense of safety within the immigrant community, then that yes vote will do identically the same thing. It will pass it over to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen has already formed a Human Relations Committee that they are gonna work with. This includes, this will provide the form that Lieutenant Noble has already expressed to you, is the appropriate form for this to be put forward. And so a yes vote gets it there, a no vote gets it there. Essentially, what this allows you to do, this vote, is on a citizen's petition that you can support it or not support it. In the end, it will go to the Board of Selectmen, and they will take a look, they will not be taking these four pages and putting them wholesale. They've already said that. Lieutenant Noble said, many of these provisions are already in the Maynard police regulations. And so these things would be voted on by the Board of Selectmen in open meeting, giving you a chance to do that. So I just wanna make clear that tonight, the law does not change. There's not one single law that is on the ballot here with this thing. All you're doing is expressing your support for, which moves it then to the Board of Selectmen, or against, which also moves it towards the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
You are gonna make some comments.
Thank you. I just have to share a few things as I'm listening and asking myself and realizing that there is something amiss here, okay? We are here not against the police, quite the opposite. These conversations have started with the police department years ago. I personally feel safe with the police. My husband went to Maynard High School with one of the police officers. My kids know Trisa by first name, okay? We're not here to criticize the police, quite the opposite. We're here saying, you have implemented community policy. We love that. But there is a group of our community that does not have that access the same way. Look around you. I've invited every single immigrant I know that lives in our town. Unfortunately, look around, they're not here. That should tell you something. I'm here today because I want to help connect our police officers with the group of immigrants who live here, who are here, who are your neighbors, so we all can be a well-connected community, so we all can feel welcoming and safe. This is not about putting the police down, this is not about putting immigrants up, and that's not about that. We're here tonight to tell the Board of Selectmen that we would like to continue these conversations, not only with the police department in our little group, but in a more formal way through the Human Relations Committee. So I just want to make it clear that we're not here to criticize the police, we're here to support and help.
Okay. I recognize the microphone in the center, excuse me, to the left. But before I do that, there doesn't seem to be a lot of new information. So I would ask anybody here that is gonna speak, that you bring new information to the table for us to consider, because we can go on all night if we wanna hear everybody's opinion. So I ask you that.
Mr. Moderator?
Do you have a guest to add? Yes.
You can speak.
May I? Mr. Moderator, may I invite her to speak, please?
No.
She's on the list.
You cannot. A town official can, but you cannot.
I'm happy to invite her to speak.
Who is she?
She's on an approved list to speak tonight.
Are you asking for permission for her to speak?
Yeah. If someone comes in there and wants her to speak, I think she should have her.
Okay. You are limited to...
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Limited to facts. You cannot express an opinion.
I appreciate your indulgence. I am not a Maynard resident. My name is Laura Rotolo, and I am here to represent the American Civil Liberties Union that has members in Maynard and throughout the state. And just to offer, my particular expertise is that I have helped over 30 cities and towns in Massachusetts pass similar articles. And I just want to add, I will stick to the facts, that your very neighbors have very similar policies. Some of the language was taken from Acton, Concord, Sudbury, and Lincoln. And also urban areas that have, you know, those urban problems, higher crime, et cetera, like Somerville, Chelsea, and Springfield as well, also have very similar policies. I wanna offer any help that I can to move this forward. We have worked with police chiefs around the state on similar policies. So, thank you.
Microphone to my right.
Elizabeth Stider Milligan for Lincoln Street. I was at a forum, an event, with our three state representatives for this region, and they all talked about how incredibly important it was to help make new immigrants not feel safe, feel safer, to how important it is to public health and public safety. And what I'd like to say, I'd said that, and also that I really feel that moving this article forward would enhance the ability of our police to, it would make it easier for them, because they have more cooperation, they have people more likely to come out and talk with them about what they've seen, because they won't be feeling like they will be deported. Or even though, I know that they haven't been, but there's this fear nationally that's very real, very palpable, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Microphone in the center.
Yes, sir. I'd like to direct this to Mr. Prisby. We are concerned, and I'm very concerned about young children and people coming here as illegal, undocumented, I'll use the proper phrase, undocumented aliens. But they're still coming in illegally. And by doing so, and putting a lure up like a sanctuary town or sanctuary city, that draws more of them in, it puts them in danger getting here. Very bad news, okay? So if you're really concerned about their safety, you shouldn't have something like this as a lure to draw them in here. Number two, if you look at the prison systems, okay? You ever heard of Kate Steinle? You haven't, okay. Well, she was a victim.
Oh, yes, I have, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. There's a lot of these, okay, murders going on...
I was waiting for someone to bring that up.
...by illegal immigrants, okay, getting into the country. Hundreds, okay? And if you look at the prison system, the way it stands, and the amount of illegal immigrants in the system, undocumented aliens, whatever you wanna call them, okay? In California alone, it's probably up to 45% for capital offenses and serious felonies. This just draws problems into the communities, okay? True, to Maynard a lesser extent, but nonetheless, it brings it here. We don't need it, and therefore, I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
So to address your question?
Yes.
So this is, just to be clear, again, this is just a recommendation, okay?
Yeah.
As Ken said.
Right.
There are, regardless of what you think of the people...
That's good enough, you're repeating yourself.
Thank you.
Microphone on the left.
Hi, thank you. Elizabeth Barron, 27 Glendale Street. I have to say something about what he just said on top of that comment, that it's been stated by experts, many experts here and a lot of statistics, that the crime actually goes down when immigrants feel safe to call the police, to call 911. I have worked in 911, myself as a firefighter, paramedic, and a dispatcher for emergency services. I know that if you call 911, the police are gonna come, no matter what the reason you're calling for, call an ambulance, fire department, wanna report a crime. There is definitely the truth that people are intimidated by the police, whether they're, you know, immigrants or not. And that is an actual issue, it's a public safety issue. I am part of the Maynard welcomes you group, and there is not an anti-police group, okay? I don't understand the sentiment, and I have a question for Lieutenant Noble. Why he got up in defense, in a defensive stance and tone in a very intimidating show by the audience of that we are somehow anti-police? Like that, exactly what I'm talking about. Exactly what I'm talking about. We're not an, we are concerned about...
You'll leave the room if you don't have proper order here. Is that clear? Continue, please.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking to me. It's a public safety concern. And I had an experience, my daughter was having her 21st birthday party at a house in Maynard, and an ambulance was called because one of the people was having an asthma attack. The police came and...
You're deviating from the...
No, I'm not. And the person who called, the police asked for their identification, I don't know why. And these kids spoke another language, and I didn't know if that was normal procedure because, in my experience, you don't need to show an ID to call 911. But that did happen here. And I just wanted to ask Lieutenant Noble, why do you think that, since you said that all the things that are written, and it's, like we said, it's not binding, it's just a suggestion, it's a committee that we've all formed together, why is it a problem? And why do you feel like that we're anti-police?
I didn't say this, I actually said that we agree with most of the stuff in there, but there are some things in there that are just unsafe. To have a bright-line rule to not work with agencies is not good police practice. Secondly, I apologize if I came off intimidating, because that's not usually what I'm called.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Greg DeZolo, 1 Randall Road. I just wanna commend everyone. I think this is a really important conversation, really difficult, having worked in town, you know, bylaw writing and all that. I've looked at this issue, there is no template for how a town, you know, can address a problem this big. So it's not perfect, but I think after thinking about kind of the committees and all these things, that really, the process really is the point here. We have a chance, we have a process going forward with five elected officials with an informed committee, the police will be involved. So I think... So I think really, people should vote their conscience, vote their heart, and this is our opportunity to give them a reading of where we all stand. So I think that's really what this is about, and that's why this vote is important. So thank you.
Recognize the microphone in the center.
Hi, my name is Tom Babian, I live at nineteen Omore Avenue. I think variety is a spice of life, and I like walking downtown and seeing all the different restaurants and all that stuff, and I'm a member of a tiny ethnic minority, I'm sure Armin can concur. So in any event, I like, the emotional stuff I kind of put aside. So color and all this other stuff, I'm just really interested in the law, I work with the law and taxation, you know, as a business. And law's funny, it doesn't, it doesn't really see all that stuff. It's pretty black and white, if you've ever been through an IRS audit, it's pretty cut and dry with the regulations. So my concern is that any policy that is codified in writing is very dangerous from an equal protection standpoint, and I'll give you an example. If I'm pulled over by Officer Noble, he'll probably run me for FBI warrant, he'll run me for an IRS Criminal Investigation Division warrant, he might run me for a number of things. And that's the problem, codifying something like this in writing, a policy for one group and not others, is really dangerous. And I think they're already doing that already, and I think just putting it in writing is really an error. Legally, it's an error, we've got a couple lawyers on stage with Officer Noble and Ms. Piro, so I think, I think codifying something like that is a very dangerous equal protection issue that could be, you could sue for, because someone will get picked up and they would, they would be ran, and they would be probably turned over to some federal agency, be it DEA, or FBI, or IRS. So that's something to consider, and that's all I want to say, so.
Okay, all right. I believe you had the amendment that you wanted to do. Now, if you can make the motion to amend, I'm requesting that you don't. I read it. You won't gain anything by it, because as the Finance Committee explained, it's a recommendation only, and that's just going to complicate life and not gain much. So you have the absolute right to make the amendment, I would appreciate it if you didn't. Also, I'm gonna, just, these last five are the only ones that I'm going to allow to talk, because we're beginning to repeat ourselves, and they've been waiting. And I'll let this woman, whether she wants to make the amendment or not, and then the five, and I won't be allowing you, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to, this is Sheri Zitter from twenty-one Lewis Street. I'm going to accept your recommendation that this would complicate things, I just want to say that, from my perspective, as the gentleman said on the left before me, that we are giving town meeting, I mean, we're giving the Selectmen, the police, and the Human Relations Committee a reading on what it is that we want. And my sense is that what most of us want as citizens is for everyone in town to feel safe, and for the police to feel safe in terms of, you know, whatever they're being asked to do, that both of those things can be accomplished by the structure we're going to recommend to. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Eric Goodhart, and there are a couple of things I haven't heard said this evening, which I want to say before we close. First of all, I think that the intention behind this is not to criticize police, obviously, but to empower the police to stand up for the community and for immigrants within the community if ICE overreaches, and that's a real thing. Because not only are they detaining a large numbers of immigrants, legal immigrants and illegal immigrants, but there is also work to strip citizenship from people who've had it for years. And we hear about all kinds of innocent people being, you know, winding up in detention. And that's, I think, what a lot of the concern in this community is. And the other thing which I think is really valuable is that this petition is, this article is asking the police to be accountable for what they actually do relating to the treatment of immigrants. It's not judging them for what they do, it's asking them formally to hold themselves accountable to us, to give statistics about, and to give information about, to us, the citizens of this town, about what might be done to immigrants, legal or illegal, who come before you and who get caught up in ICE's net. We want to know what happens to those people. Thank you.
Microphone in the center.
My name's Chris Bell, I live on Michael Road. I guess my question was just to the gentleman from the Finance Committee, who, you keep implying that this is not binding, and I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not, you know, but I read contracts all the time, and it says, "To see if the town will vote to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they adopt the following regulation." And then later, it says, "Hereby adopts the following regulation to be issued as a general order of the chief." And then it lists all those things that you guys keep saying are still up for debate. And then my second question was just, I'd like a little bit more information about the Human Relations Committee, was that, like, decided at a Board of Selectmen, I'll admit, I don't go to every Board of Selectmen meeting, was that it decided at the Board of Selectmen meeting? You know, was it, you know, could anybody be on that committee, or was it just chosen by people who came to that committee that day? Those are my two questions, so.
So you want to talk about the Human Relations Committee?
Well, you can ask my first question first. I'm more interested in the part, you were saying it's...
You're not interested in me?
Just give me a quick five minutes on it, like, do you guys have a meeting, and it just, you guys have the power to create any committee you want?
No, we, the police chief suggested a Human Relations Committee quite some time ago, and then about a month ago, as I said a little bit earlier, Elliot came to us with several other people in support of this proposal, and the citizens' petition with the signatures and everything. And we discussed it in an open meeting at a Board of Selectmen meeting, and we discussed several different ways to go. And one of the, one of the things that we did discuss was the possibility of forming a, you know, a committee. And that's what we did, a foreign, you know, Relations Committee. So we formed a committee with Elliot and his folks, with Town Administrator Greg Johnson, the police chief, and we put a couple people on, and I'm not a member, I'm a liaison from the Selectmen to the committee, so I'm not a full committee member. And then the rest of the people that are on the committee were basically suggested by Elliot and Danielle and the group, that group. And so that's how we formed the committee, and, but it was an open meeting, the transcripts are available, the minutes are available, and it was all, you know...
Because I have to say, it feels to me like, everyone keeps saying, "Don't worry, whether you vote one way or that way, whether you vote yes or no, it's all just going to go back to this committee, and then they're just going to get what they want, not in open forum, it's going to be a committee." But they'll still have to go back to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen will still have to approve any new policies.
Could you say that again?
So my question is, the Finance Committee guy and the other people have said, if you vote yes, it goes to the committee, if you vote no, it goes to the committee.
Yeah.
So what's the point? Is the committee going to say...
So I'm going to ask Town Council to answer that question, because Finance Committee is not a legal representative, and so...
It says hereby adopts.
So first of all, any committee, any subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen's up to the open meeting law, they have to post meetings, so every time this committee meets, it has to post meetings, and you're all invited to attend. Secondly, it's a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, so they wrote, the citizens' petition is written as if it were the policy that they wanted, but it is a recommendation the Board of Selectmen do not have to adopt it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I recognize the microphone to the right.
Assistant Moderator, can I just address the process for, for the committee?
No. Person on the right.
And I think I speak for a lot of people here. If in fact it's true, that whether you vote yes or no, we get the same result here, is very disappointing. To come here for three hours, and that's the result, I think is a very questionable approach to this. My personal opinion is, what we're doing here tonight is getting the train moving on Maynard becoming a sanctuary city. I strongly oppose that. I took the time, there's been a lot of people's opinion here tonight, but I took the time to Google sanctuary city. And it is, in fact, refers to municipal jurisdictions typically in North America and Western Europe that limit their cooperation with the national government's effort to enforce immigration law. I've been a resident here for over fifty years, my family's been here for over a hundred years, and I can't believe, as a community, we're taking this haphazard approach to limit the government's ability to enact law. I find it disturbing, and I strongly oppose this.
Microphone in the center. Okay, I had sixteen, I had sixteen really good points to bring up, I'm narrowing it to two. The first is, is I don't know how this got phrased, is a pro or anti-police issue. The police are our servants, and also they're our experts on law enforcement. The lieutenant has stood here, he's told you what the policy and practices are of the Maynard Police Department. Now here's your choice. You can say, "Yes, we agree with your policy and practices, because you're our experts, and we trust you, you are our good servants." Or you can check no, and say, you know, "I just don't like it. I'm going to leave my police department out in the cold without the protection of a consensus by the citizenry." And the second point I want to bring up is, why are we doing this? How many times do you really get to vote on what you think being an American looks like? And if you're not up to that, go home now. And last question, go ahead.
Sir, Dave Keig, Brown Street. As an immigrant myself, might not look like one, but I'm an immigrant, moved here in 2006, I found Maynard nothing but inviting, welcoming diverse group of people, and actually a testament to what we talked about tonight. Whether we decide yes or no, we've already all seen, it's simply going to move forward with the Human Relations Committee. One advice to the Board of Selectmen, I looked at the charter for the Human Relations Committee, think you might want to relook at that again, if I'm not mistaken, it references that the Human Relations Committee can actually take action against findings and/or things it sees using media, et cetera. That would include social media. I think we can all agree that social media is not something that should be used to single out an entity or a person with whom you disagree with. Secondly, I would also recommend that the Human Relations Committee, even though it might have been, already been formed, should be formed openly, and people in this audience can volunteer to be on this committee such that it has a representation of the whole community versus a few town officials alongside with people recommended by the applicant.
And I give you sixty seconds for your last comment.
Just to clarify, the Human Relations Committee, it was posted on the website asking for people to apply, people applied, and the Board of Selectmen and Greg Johnson, they decided, there was a process, they decided who made the cut, who was part of it. However, any number of affiliates can come and attend and participate in these discussions. So if you're concerned about it, I'm really encouraging you to come and share your opinions, let's work together on this, so we can come up with something that, that reflects Maynard, that helps everyone in this room, and people who weren't very comfortable to come tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to voting. I'm going to make this a secret ballot, because I think there's a lot of emotion here, and I don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor. So I ask you not to fold your ballots, to turn them upside down so people can't see them. Use ballot number thirteen, and for Article Six. or better yeses, and we had three hundred and thirty-three, so Article Five passes. While we're waiting for the results of Article Six, I would like to thank WAVM and all of the efforts they've made tonight. I also like to thank the students from the National Honor Society for providing babysitting And I'd also like to thank everybody in the audience, especially for Article Six, for all the diversity of opinion. I hope everybody listened to everybody else, and so that you made an informed decision about tonight, and I really appreciate it, and I'm sorry I had to be so hard, but as you saw, it was very controversial. So last but not least, I'd like to thank the ladies who counted and took all of the ballots and everything else, they've done a fabulous job. The article did not pass one sixty to one sixty-seven. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting.
Bill Coleman, Howard Road. Mister Moderator, I move that this meeting be dissolved.